Recording in progress.
I think we can go ahead and start. It's now one o'clock. This is the Douglas County Planning Commission, January 11th, 2022, and I will call the meeting to order. We have all seven members of the Planning Commission here in person, so we have a quorum. And I would ask, Nick, if he would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Nick. At this time, we will have opening public comment. Public comment will be taken on those items that are within the jurisdiction and control of the Planning Commission. Additional public comment periods may be allowed on individual agenda items at the discretion of the chairperson. It is requested that members of the public comment on those agenda items when they are considered. In addition to opening public comment, public comment will be also taken on each item listed on the agenda when they are discussed by the Planning Commission. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker on matters over which the Planning Commission has jurisdiction, supervision, or control. The Planning Commission wants to encourage the respectful consideration of all views by members of the public. If the content is willfully disruptive of the meeting by being irrelevant, repetitious, slanderous, offensive, inflammatory, irrational, or amounts to a personal attack or interfering with the rights of others, the individual will be asked to stop speaking. So we will start with public comment here in the room, and if you have public comment, please go ahead, sign in. The microphone is already on, and we will start your three minutes.
This will be brief. I just want to welcome the two new members. Thank you for participating in the next couple of years. It's always a good idea for the public to be involved. I'm glad that I have the opportunity, the time, and I hope I come with meaningful comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There's no one else at the location that we're at for a public comment? And Colleen, if you could just confirm that you don't have any additional members of the public who are on the Zoom call? If not, we will close public comment.
Thank you, Chairman Walder. Yes, we only have staff on the Zoom call at this time.
Okay. Thank you, Colleen. So as of 1:03, I will close public comment, and we'll move to the approval of the agenda. This is for possible action approval of the proposed agenda. The Planning Commission reserves the right to take items in a different order, to combine two or more agenda items for consideration, and to remove items from the agenda or delay discussion relating to an item on the agenda at any time. We do have three items on our agenda as it's printed in the packet, and I would be happy to entertain any public comment that anyone has on the approval of the agenda. Seeing no public comment on approval of the agenda, we'll come back to the Planning Commission for any questions or discussion or a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Maureen moves to approve the agenda. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Mark seconds the approval of the agenda. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, I'll call for a vote on the approval of the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then on this vote, there's seven votes aye, no votes nay, and the agenda is approved. We'll move to approval of the minutes. This is the draft minutes for approval. This is for possible action discussion to approve the draft minutes of the December 14th, 2021 regular meeting and December 21, 2021 special meeting of the Planning Commission. We'll open this for public comment. If any members of the public would wish to comment on the minutes, seeing none, we'll close public comment. I would note that we have two. It sometimes has been members' decision to abstain from approval of minutes if they have not been here, but it is also appropriate. The minutes are for everyone to read and see if they meet the standards of the minutes that are required. So it's a member's option as to whether they would like to vote on this issue or to abstain. So that's an individual prerogative. So, members of the Planning Commission, have any questions or comments on approval of the minutes before we entertain a motion? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the December 14th and December 21 meeting?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes for the December 14th and the December 21st meetings.
Is there a second?
Second.
Bryce seconds the motion of Mark to approve the two December meetings' minutes. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So in this, there's seven votes aye and no votes nay, so the minutes are approved. We'll move on to the first item on our agenda. This is the election of Chair and Vice Chair. This is for possible action discussion on the election of the Chair and Vice Chair in compliance with Chapter 2.06 of the Douglas County Code and Section 2.1 of the Planning Commission bylaws. We'll start with a brief explanation. If you have not read the bylaws, Section 2.1, it does enunciate how we elect the officers. We have to elect both a Chair and a Vice Chair. We can do those in one motion, or we can have two motions, and that's at the pleasure of the members of the Planning Commission. I will start by entertaining public comment, and then we'll come back to the Planning Commission for questions or suggestions or motions that they would like to make. So is there any public comment? And this will include the public comment to be both for the Chair and Vice Chair. If people want to make public comment on any of those possible motions, they can make them all at one point rather than having two periods of public comment here. So any public comment on Item 1, election of Chair and Vice Chair? Seeing no public comment here in the meeting room, we'll close public comment, and we'll come back to members of the Planning Commission. Colleen, did anybody else pop up online for a public comment?
Thank you, Chairman Walder. No, we still have only staff.
Okay. Just go ahead and interrupt the proceedings if we do have individuals who come in at the last minute, so we can make sure anybody is allowed public comment if they're either here in person or online. So seeing no public comment, then we'll close public comment, come back to the Planning Commission. And again, as I said, this is now for open for discussion or a motion on election of the Chair and Vice Chair, either separately or together. Members of the Planning Commission, comments or emotions?
Mr. Chairman?
Mark?
I'd like to jump in and make a motion. I nominate Maureen to be the Chairman for the upcoming year. She has served two years as Vice Chair, and I've been very impressed with her detail. I know that she reads every single word in all of our agenda packages, and I am impressed with her knowledge about each and every issue that has been presented over the past two years.
Thank you, Mark. Is there a second to Mark's motion that Maureen be elected Chair?
Second.
Dave, you second the motion. Thank you very much. Is there discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to echo a member of Needon Rep's comments about Ms. Casey. I think she'll serve well in the capacity of Chairwoman.
Thank you very much, Bryce. Other comments?
I agree. I think Maureen is perfectly suited for the role.
Thank you very much, Nick. Other comments from members of the Planning Commission? I would add my concurrence with what everyone has said. Maureen has served for two years as Vice Chair. She has done an outstanding job of both preparing and participating in the meetings. She's proven herself time and time again to be a valued member of the Planning Commission, and I think will serve admirably as Chair, so I endorse her completely. Dave?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that two years ago, or however many years ago it was, I was on the board when Maureen was asked to serve on the Planning Commission, and she's done a great job. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dave. Other discussion on the motion that Maureen be elected Chair? Seeing none, I will close the discussion and call for the vote. All those in favor of Mark's motion that Maureen be elected Chair signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then the vote is seven to zero. Congratulations, Maureen. You were elected Chair.
Thank you.
With your indulgence, I'll conduct the election for Vice Chair, and then we'll take a short recess, and then we'll move chairs and bodies around. So, we can follow the same process. If they have, if anyone has questions or comments that they'd like to make as far as consideration for an individual to be Vice Chair, we can have those, or we can move to a motion to nominate someone for Vice Chair. Or I can ask for volunteers.
Yeah, I would move that Mark Needon Rep be placed as Vice Chair.
Dave moves that Mark be nominated as Vice Chair. Is there a second?
I would second that.
Maureen seconds the motion. Is there discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I would also suggest that Mr. Needon Rep be the Vice Chair. I too believe that he's served the county well in his role. Not sure if he wants that role, but we'll see here in a minute. But I would, I would move as well to, or not move, but I would support that.
Thank you very much, Bryce. Mark, your chance to back out is here, but I'm sensing that you might be overruled. Nick, you have your microphone on. Nick, would you like to make comments?
I would like to hear from Mark, to see if he's thrown his hat in the ring on this.
Well, Nick, to be honest with you, I haven't given it much thought, but I know that I'll be backing up Maureen, and I think that she's going to be a one, do a wonderful job. And for those meetings that she is absent, I'll be glad to step up.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Your willingness to serve is only exceeded by your talent, and I know you will do an admirable job as well. So other discussion on the motion that Mark be elected Vice Chair. Seeing no other discussion, then I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So in this, there's seven votes aye and no votes nay. Congratulations, Mark. We look forward to your assistant leadership. And now, if we can take perhaps a five-minute recess, we'll move a few chairs, and then Maureen can take over. Thank you.
It's been 26 years since I've been Chair of a large group, so I beg your patience. We are moving to Agenda Item Number 2, Manufactured Home Accessory Dwelling for Possible Action Discussing Discussion on a Zoning Text Amendment to the Douglas County Code, Section 20.660150, accessory uses to include the addition of the RA5 Rural Agricultural 5-Acre Minimum Lot Size, RA10 Rural Agricultural 10-Acre Minimum Lot Size, and MH Manufactured Housing Overlay Zoning Districts to the list of zoning districts where the use of manufactured homes as accessory dwellings is allowed, and to clarify that they must be secured to a permanent foundation. Sam Booth for Community Development will be presenting via Zoom because he's a little bit under the weather. Sam, you are here. Will you start your presentation, please?
Yes, thank you, and congratulations, Chairwoman Casey.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Needon Rep. Would also like to say welcome to our new members, Mr. Nelson and Mr. Paxton. Anyway, good afternoon, Sam Booth, Deputy Director of Community Development. As Chairwoman Casey just read, this is Agenda Item 2. This starts in the packet on page 85. This is a zoning text amendment to Douglas County Code, Section 20.660. If I can, I will share my screen here. So a little bit of background for the Planning Commission on this discussion. The reason this zoning text amendment is being brought forward to the Planning Commission today is as a result of the November 18th, 2021 Board of Commissioners meeting. During that meeting, there was an agendized discussion on this section of County Code, and after a discussion with staff and the commissioners, the commissioners voted 3 to 2 to direct staff to evaluate and make changes to Title 20.660150 of Douglas County Code, and this is the portion of code that refers to and describes accessory dwelling standard. So subsequent to that meeting, staff did a deep dive into this code section and to other sections that relate to it, and reviewed the proposed changes and the discussion with the Board. And we've proposed changes in red lines that are here in your packet today. The proposed changes, I believe, are limited in scope, and this was as a result of a direction from the commissioners in that discussion, that we keep the scope and changes of the changes made to the code as limited as possible. What we're looking to do, and what this code change is proposing, is to add the Rural Agricultural RA zoning districts, as well as the MH Manufactured Housing Overlay Zoning, to the list of approved zoning districts where a manufactured home can be used as an accessory dwelling. And that currently includes the A19 Agricultural 19-acre, FR19 Forest and Range 19-acre, and the Forest and Range 40-acre, FR40 zoning districts. So these changes, we believe, would allow manufactured homes as accessory dwellings in more rural areas requiring a minimum of five acres, or in the case of the MH Overlay Zoning District, it would allow manufactured homes as accessory dwelling where they're already permitted with limited architectural standards as the primary dwelling. The proposed changes also include the addition of language clarifying that manufactured homes are only allowed when secured to a permanent foundation. I would note that, and I had a short discussion after a question from Member Paxton on this, that during the Board of Commissioners hearing, and in your minutes in the packet today, you can see there was a discussion between Commissioner Tarkanian and myself about some of the proposed language or language that could be included. And what we were discussing was the possibility of allowing manufactured homes as accessory dwellings where the primary dwelling already existed as a manufactured home. To that point, I believe I stated to him that in the code today, and it's in 20.664010, subsection C6 states that the accessory dwelling shall be compatible with the architecture and the materials of the main dwelling. And my thought there, as we were initially analyzing this, was that because we had language in the code that stated that an accessory dwelling must be compatible with the architecture of a primary dwelling, it may be as easy as saying, if your primary dwelling is a manufactured home, that the accessory dwelling could also be a manufactured home, because it would be consistent with the architecture. However, after the commissioners meeting and after that discussion, as I was looking through the code and as we were describing these changes, looking at them, one thing that came up was that this discussion or this proposal could allow manufactured homes as accessory dwellings in all areas of residential zoning districts within the county. And the Board had specifically asked to keep this, the scope of this change narrow. And the discussion revolved around specifically, I believe Commissioner Mark Gardner was aware of someone in the southern portion of the county off of the west side of 395 that lost their home in the Tamarack Fire, and was looking to rebuild their accessory dwelling as a manufactured home, and came across the requirement that Development Code today does not allow manufactured homes to be an accessory dwelling. So that individual's property specifically is Zoned RA5, and I believe the code provision and code change today would allow that home to have an accessory dwelling as a manufactured home. But beyond just that one person's property, we also discussed, Commissioner Gardner discussed what he thought was a discrepancy in that in the TRE area, there are many manufactured homes that are the primary dwelling, and he thought it was odd that the code would not allow accessory dwelling to be a manufactured home when there's already primary dwellings that are manufactured homes. And this isn't just specific to TRE. There are also other areas in the county where we have, of course, manufactured homes that may be set on a lot as the primary dwelling. So in looking at trying to do that, rather than allow accessory dwellings wherever there's a primary dwelling that's a manufactured home, what we're looking to do here is only allow it in the RA5, RA10, in the MH Overlay Zoning District. And as I stated earlier, I believe those are more rural areas, so this isn't in your subdivisions in Mindem and Gardenville, or in the heart of the ranchos. These are more outerline areas, larger lots, a little more space between your neighbors. To illustrate that, I have a few maps here showing the location of some of this zoning districts in the county. This image here shows RA5 and RA10 zoning in the East Valley area generally, north of Toller Lane, on either side of East Valley. It's kind of that lightish green color that I have starred. There's a darker green in here, which is the RA10 zoning around Orchard Road generally, and then in Fish Springs, there's also some RA5 zoning district. So in these areas, a manufactured home could be permitted as an accessory dwelling. Additionally, on the southwest side of the Gardenville Ranches, on both sides of Kimmerling Road and west of the Bean Pit, is some RA5 zoning. So in these 5-acre lots, again, an accessory dwelling could be permitted as a manufactured home if this proposed change is approved. And then finally, this last slide here is looking at the south portion of the county, I think specifically where some of the questions Gardner had arise from, to just to kind of orient you on the map. This is State Road 208 and 395, the intersection there at Holbrook Junction. The very large star I have there is Topaz Ranch Estates, TRE. You can see by the labeling on the map that we have this highlighted. It's a manufactured housing overlay for all of TRE, and so that's why we've included the MH Overlay Zoning District as an area where we think this is appropriate. On the south side of 208, David Park, Park Ranch, has some RA5 zoning. There are some other individual property owners used to that with RA5 zoning. On the west side of Holbrook Junction, you can see there's some lots there, RA5. And then to the north, this northwest star that I have here- And then to the north, this northwest star that I have here is near the area of Penrod Lane, where the gentleman that lost his home in the Tamarack fire that, I think originally brought this issue to light, where that home is. And those zoning districts in that area are RA5 as well. So these are the, in general, the areas we're looking to apply this code to, to allow manufactured homes as accessory dwellings. I want to point out that in addition to the standards and requirements of the code that we're specifically looking at with this change, we do have single-family dwelling design standards. These are architectural standards in the code that apply to both single-family homes and accessory dwellings. So regardless of a home being a manufactured home, if it's set on a property, on a residential property, or an agricultural property as well, without an agricultural use, the home must meet the single-family dwelling design standards. And these requirements include things like each home must be at least 20 feet wide at its narrowest point. I believe that language was included in the code years ago to discourage the older single-wide mobile home style homes. Also requiring a 412 roof pitch, that the homes must have a minimum eve length of 16 inches, in a mix of three of the following, and there's a required, there's a list here that you can mix and match. You could have more than two gables on the home, recessed entries, or a covered porch, or bay window. You could have eaves that are a little bit longer in size, up to 24 inches, or a steeper roof pitch up to a 612, deck railings, other things like that that make the home more interesting and improve the look of the home architecturally. And just to give you some examples of what we're talking about, the single-family dwelling standards would allow the two homes on the left side, these two images here, which are manufactured homes. You can see in these two examples, they're providing some of the items that we talked about in those, in that previous code section. There are more than two gabled ends. There are either a covered porch, one example with a railing, or an elevated porch and some landscaping, bay windows as well. Again, interesting features to make the home look more than just a square box. On the right-hand side of this slide, you can see what's not permitted and would not be allowed to be set on any property. And that's a mobile home, in more traditionally what we would think of as a mobile home. You can see the temporary skirting underneath it, kind of the lack of eaves on the home, lack of covered porches or other features that jut in or jut out from the structure itself. I would also point out that one of the main differences between the definition of a mobile home and a manufactured home is that a mobile home was a home built prior to June 15, 1976. And prior to that date, federal housing and urban development standards were not implemented in reviewing mobile or manufactured type homes. So since June of 1976, manufactured home is the term that's used. And these homes are reviewed by, against the Housing and Urban Development Code. And they're inspected by inspectors. Of course, as the Planning Commission knows, manufactured homes are built in the factory. They're inspected against the HUD standards in the factory. Similar to a mobile home, they do have framing that allows them to go on the road, to be moved to the site. That framing is removed when it's, or the wheels that may be under the structure may are removed when it's set on the site. As I described earlier, what we're looking for with our code requirement additionally is to require that it's set on a permanent foundation and becomes an affixed part of the land. And so as you can see in both of these examples on the left as well, they're set on a foundation and it hides the element, you know, it makes it look more like a stick-built home, we So in conclusion, there are findings that must be made with any zoning text amendment. There are four findings for approval. Those findings are in our staff report on your packet, page 88. And staff believes each of the findings can be made to approve the requested text amendment. And staff recommends approval of the changes. And when you're ready for it, I do have a recommended motion that is also in the packet as well. That's all I have for my presentation.
Thank you, Sam. Are there questions at this time for staff?
Yes. So Sam, since you're the only staff that I see, I guess this question is directed to you. So with respect to putting an accessory dwelling unit on a piece of property, do the, does the applicant have to pay the building fees, the thousand bucks, whatever that goes to the school, the thousand bucks that goes to the park, and all the other related fees?
Yes, that's correct, Vice Chair Medenrep. With any, the discussion we're having here about a manufactured home is really just that difference between, as I said, a home that's reviewed against the HUD code versus the International Residential Code or Building Code. But regardless, when you come and you pull a building permit for any home, you have to go through the same process, the same review procedure, and pay the same school parks and roads taxes with each permit, as well as requiring a building allocation. And specifically with accessory dwellings, you have to go through a designer view application that staff reviews against all these, each of these sections of code, and you have to receive approval there before you can get approval on your building permits.
Okay. So my next question is, will this accessory dwelling unit have to drill its own well? Will it have to have its own septic system? And I'll answer that before I go on to my next questions.
Okay. Yes, thank you, Sam Booth, for the record. The accessory dwelling would be required to drill its own well. And we require, as part of the designer view, a letter from the state stating that they are monitoring the well and are aware of the permit for the well. In the case of the septic system, I believe it depends on the design of the system and the capacity of the existing system on the property, whether or not those two can be tied together, or it requires an additional septic system in addition to the primary home. And I see DA Sam Taylor raising the hand.
Sam Taylor.
Yes, Sam, Chair, Sam Taylor for the Douglas County District Attorney's Office. I would just like to note that in the event that a parcel like an RA5 is within the mandatory distance away from sewer or water, they would have to connect and pay all the associated fees. I'm not sure if there's any lots where this would occur, but in the event that they are adjacent to existing water and sewer within the specified distance, they would then have to connect. So they wouldn't need necessarily a well or septic tank in that event.
So Sam, as a follow-up question, in a manufacturing overlay, how large are those lots?
Sam Booth, for the record. Thank you, Mr. Medenrep, for the question. Without looking at the code table for the manufactured overlay, I can't tell you the minimum required. On a case-by-case basis, that overlay is approved by the Planning Commission and the board. In the case of Topaz Ranch Estates or TRE, those lots down there are two acres in size. And I know there are just a few other areas where we have manufactured overlay. I believe the Hat Hoot Project off of Pineut Road was approved as a manufactured overlay. But that's multi-family residential zoning, so they're not individual lots. And generally, I think that is, that is the case, that it depends on the underlying zoning of the property where the overlay is applied.
So if we have a two-acre lot, and we're going to put two septic systems on a two-acre lot, does the state allow that? I thought that we were trying to get away from having individual septic disposal systems because of nitrate problems.
So the minimum requirement from the state is a minimum of, excuse me, Sam Booth, Deputy Director of Community Development, for the record. The minimum requirement per NDEP is one acre in size, a one-acre parcel for that. And then there are, there is a map, I believe it's a one-mile radius, one-mile diameter that's measured for density. And if you exceed a certain number of septic systems within a one-mile diameter, then that triggers a requirement of either a nitrification system, or I believe in some cases that the state can deny the ability for the system to be installed there. I would note, you know, I understand the questions. The proposed change to the code is not changing the fact that accessory dwellings are allowed in the code today in each of these zoning districts that we're talking about. If you have over a half an acre, if you're a single-family, one-half acre or larger, today you can have an accessory dwelling in the Carson Valley, or in the southern portion of the county. In the Tahoe Basin, the requirement is one acre. But those requirements, the septic system, the well, those are reviewed against our standard engineering design guidelines, as well as approval from NDEP.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Dave?
Sam, I was wondering, when the commissioners met on this, Mark Gardner made a proposal that died for lack of a second. Can you explain to me exactly how this differs from what he had, what you had proposed at that point?
Yeah, Member Nelson, this is Sam Booth, for the record. I'd have to go back to the minutes to remember specifically that motion made. Unless you can enlighten me, I believe it was just broader in terms of the proposed change. And I know there was some discussion Commissioner Tarkanian had, and I think some others, about whether or not they were approving a proposed change to the code that day. And I think they discussed that, okay, once they realized they were just requesting staff to evaluate a change to the code and then to bring it to the Planning Commission, I believe that's where it then received approval. And also with the caveat, I think it was Commissioner Tarkanian that made the motion, and he specifically stated for the scope to be as narrow as possible. So I think it was before they had that discussion about narrowing the scope.
Yeah, I think that the differences between the proposal was four of the commissioners really didn't want this to be countywide. And this still seems to be countywide. So I'm wondering exactly how we're going to limit this, say in Clear Creek or along Orchard. There's some 10-acre parcels in there that I would not like to see manufactured housing brought into. I'm not sure about Sterling Ranch, if there's any five acres in there or not, that there could be. And there's just a lot of areas that manufactured housing, in my opinion, as a Realtor and a Realtor with a license to sell manufactured homes resale, I know that they're, they just aren't the same quality as a lot of the houses you're going to find on five-acre parcels. And it stands out like a sore thumb. While I'm on the Planning Commission, one of my main goals is to do no harm to any existing homeowner. And so I'm very concerned about that. And having this be countywide is something that I'm afraid I would object to. Thank you.
In looking at the minutes from the Board of Commissioners, it is clear that the direction from Commissioner Tarkanian's motion, that it was direction to staff to come back with recommendations, which they have. And it has come back that the motion is to make minor corrections to the zoning districts, which they have. So if there are no other questions at this time, okay, we've got Ken and then Nick.
Councilwoman Marine?
Go ahead.
A question for Sam. The maps that you provided, the R5, R10s with the stars on them, those would become manufactured home overlays?
Thanks for the question, Ken. Sam Booth, for the record. No, those areas would not specifically become manufactured overlays. That's a zoning ordinance, a zoning map amendment that has to come to the Planning Commission and Board separately. We're not proposing that today. What I was just illustrating in those images is where the RA5 and the RA10 zoning exist today. And with this code change, it would be possible in those zoning districts where accessory dwellings to be manufactured homes.
Thank you.
Nick?
Sam, excuse me, Nick Meyer. Sam, where are the manufacturing overlay districts specifically?
Sam Booth, for the record, once again, if you bear with me, I will just do a quick search here. The main manufactured overlay that I know of is TRE, Topaz Ranch Estates. We do have just a few areas near Minden and Gardenville, or near Gardenville specifically. I can see a couple of the mobile home parks in Gardenville that you're aware of. Those have a manufactured housing overlay. That's how they exist today as a mobile home park. However, the zoning that's in place there is not SFR, single-family half-acre zoning. So number one, they couldn't have an accessory dwelling in those areas because they don't have enough acreage. And then number two, they wouldn't be able to have a manufactured accessory dwelling because they don't have a minimum of five acres, as per our code change suggested today. Just trying to take a quick look, along 395, as you come out of Holbrook Junction and TRE, there are just a few pockets of manufactured housing, small areas there. And let's see, I don't believe that there's much in the North County, if any. I stand corrected here, on the west side of 395, south of Mica Drive in Indian Hills, there's a manufactured housing overlay in that area. But again, I think the case is the same in that they do not have the RA5 zoning, so they wouldn't be able to have manufactured housing, accessory dwellings. It does look like the zoning there is single-family half-acre. So today, they could propose a standard stick-built accessory dwelling in Indian Hills and that area though.
Okay. So in TRE, what's the current requirement for an accessory building in TRE? Let's say you have a manufactured home on two acres in TRE. What would they be allowed to do now under code?
So, Sam Booth, for the record, the current requirements, and those are in that section that's in your packet today. First of all, they depend on the zoning of the property. I believe it's two-acre zoning there. They could have up to, with two-acre zoning, they could have up to an 800-square-foot accessory dwelling. It must be a stick-built accessory dwelling onsite, per the code today. And then it would also need to meet those single-family design standards that I pointed out earlier. And that wouldn't change. So I was going to say, if you set a manufactured home on the property, if this code change is approved, you would still have to meet the single-family accessory, or excuse me, architectural design guidelines. The minimum roof pitch, either covered porch or recessed porch, bay windows, those type of things. But short answer to your question, in TRE today, they can build an accessory dwelling, but it must be stick-built onsite.
So it must be stick-built onsite, even if the current home is a manufactured home?
That's correct.
Okay. And so the new code would allow them to put a manufactured accessory building on their property if their primary residential dwelling is a dwelling. if their primary residence on the property was a manufactured home?
That, that's partially correct. So the new code would allow a manufactured home as an accessory dwelling if they are in the RA5 zoning, the RA10 zoning, or the manufactured housing overlay. And TRE is in the manufactured housing overlay, so they would be, they would be able to.
Okay. Would, would the accessory building be able to share the existing well that services the primary residence?
Yes, Sam Booth for the record, I believe they can. There are requirements for that. I'd have to refer to our engineering team, more specifically, in the, in the building team on how that's permitted. Again, it's with, with approval from the state engineer's office. I think there's a letter they provide for that.
I think that's all I've got.
Thank you, Nick. Good questions. Kirk, do you have anything?
Yes, I'd like to go back to the question of manufactured homes and what the standards are. I think earlier, Sam Booth, you said the, we have new standards, HUD issues the standards. You have a good slide that talks about what's permitted and what's not permitted. We see a mobile home built prior to June 15, 1976, prior to federal HUD standards. So I think that's a, that's a good illustration of what, what's going to be allowed and what's not going to be allowed. I did also do a little bit of research on manufactured homes, and you may have more things to share on this, Sam. But to me, the, the cost of a manufactured home in some cases is, is pretty significant. Hundred, hundred dollars or more a square foot. And I think I saw in some cases where you have manufactured homes that are as much as $500,000. We're not dictating in this what the, what the cost would be of a manufactured home that might be an accessory dwelling in any way. But we are, as Mark pointed out, we're imposing all the costs that would be on a single family home. So I think that's going to be significant. It's, I don't see that we're going to have these pop up in all sorts of areas and be substandard. I think, I think you've captured exactly what Mr. Gardner wanted to do and what was approved in the, in the Board of County Commissioners' motion. So I'm not sure if you have any other things that you would like to bring to light about the quality of the, the manufactured homes that we're, we're going to be considering in this, this proposed change? Or other information that you'd like to share, Sam?
No, thank you, Kirk. This is Sam Booth again. Not much I would add to that, other than just, of course, since that requirement was changed in 1976, in the last 40 some years, I think you can tell there's an appreciable difference in the construction standards, materials, quality of manufactured homes. We are becoming much more universally accepted in some areas these days. And I think it's, I mean, in my opinion, I think it's about the architectural standards and the additional standards that you have to apply about how they're set on the lot and some of these extra requirements that we do have in code about, you know, the other features that are added to the home and those type of things. The only other thing that I would add to Commissioner Nelson's comments, I agree with your assessment that it, this, you know, the code change that we have proposed would apply in more than, you know, some areas of the county, more than just one specific property. I had that discussion with the commissioners back when we were talking about this. I think you can't propose any change to the text of, of the development code without affecting more than one property. And the discussion we had there was if, if we wanted to keep this as singular, as specific to one property, then that it may be acceptable that that one property owner come forward with, with a variance to the code or a request like that. I believe Commissioner Noah Sad mentioned, you know, and just reminded us all that, you know, that they're in general not looking to approve or even hear applications for variances. And I think that's where we, where the motion then was made about, you know, okay, let's take a look at the code. So what we have together today is about as narrow as is, I believe we can, we can keep this request and still achieve what, what the commissioners were looking for.
Thank you, Sam. I, I think you captured it very well. You did what you were asked to do. We can't make these things site-specific. You make them site-specific, you might as well just go ahead and grant variances. And that's something we don't like to do. So I think you've made it in a generic fashion that's applicable in all cases. That's where fairness rests. And you've narrowly drawn it. When I counted, you, you changed 11 words, 11 words in the entire section, the section 20.660.150. So I think you've, you've fulfilled your mission and presented us with the appropriate way of solving the, the issues that were raised at the board meeting when that was approved by a, by a three to two vote.
Any more questions from the commission? Nick?
Yeah, we got a couple more questions. This is Nick Meyer for, for the record. Sam, you mentioned that in TRE, if someone was on a two acre parcel, they would be allowed to build an 800 square foot accessory dwelling. Is that correct?
I believe that's correct. Yes, sir.
Okay, so is it possible to buy a manufactured home for 800 square foot? I mean, is this, is this like a tiny home kind of thing we're talking about here?
You know, I can't speak to, Member Meyer, the, you know, what those manufactured home building companies can provide. It is certainly something that we review with the design review application. And we try to, to point that out anywhere possible when there's a property owner or a home builder that's looking to set an accessory dwelling like this. That yes, that it must be restricted to 800 square feet in size. If you have a larger zoning, I'm trying to pull that section of the code here. Let's see, in front of me, you can go up to 1,000 square feet in size. Yeah, okay, so if you're, if you're greater than two acres in size, you can go up to 1,000 square feet. But still, understand that, yes, that limits the size of that manufactured home that's set there. Just as Kirk Walder mentioned, I did a review of the HUD code for manufactured homes prior to the meeting. There is a minimum requirement for manufactured homes. I believe they can't be less than, and I hate to give out a number, but it's 600 or 500 square feet, it can't be less than that. So the tiny home discussion really doesn't apply to this. Those wouldn't be manufactured homes. I think there was recently a change to NRS, where there was a bill approved at the state legislature level that required each county to allow tiny homes in their jurisdiction. I think the county's review of that in, in the requirement there is we believe that the manufactured home overlay that we have today would allow for tiny homes. However, the standards would have to be approved with that zoning overlay. The planning commission would have the ability to review that on a case-by-case or a site-by-site basis. And I don't believe that's affected by this code today.
Madam Chair, I would just like to clarify one thing relative to the discussion that just took place, if I may. Yeah, Commissioner Mayor, just one thing to point out, you were talking about Topaz, correct?
Correct.
Okay. In Topaz, Mr. Booth pointed out that those lots down there are two acre size. So they would not qualify for a manufactured home as an accessory dwelling. It has to be five acres and above or a manufactured home overlay. So at Topaz, you could not have a manufactured home as an accessory dwelling?
And that, that's not, that's not my. That's not my understanding. My understanding is Topaz falls under the manufacturing home overlay. Therefore, those two acre lots could have manufactured homes. Am I mistaken there?
Not all of Topaz is manufactured home overlay. Some part of it is.
Not all, but, but Topaz, what is it, Topaz Estates? This is.
Chairwoman Casey, if I, if I may, I think I can clarify.
Okay, so Topaz Estates has a manufacturing home overlay. Okay. Another question, Sam. If you had a five acre parcel, what size of accessory dwelling could you build on a five acre parcel?
Thank you, Member Meyer, Sam Booth for the record. So the maximum size accessory dwelling allowed is 1,000 square feet. So it's either 800 square feet for those half acre up to two acre size lots, or two acre and above, it's 1,000 square feet. The only caveat or exception to that is, and you can see it just below in the next subsection that we're not amending of the code. If you're in the A19 or FR19 zoning districts and you have an agricultural operation, you can allow up to 2,500 square feet for an accessory dwelling. You know, as staff, we refer those, refer to those as the ranch hand accessory dwellings. They can even be set on a, on a ranch without a primary structure, if you read that section of the code. But that's only if you have an active farm or ranch. And those don't apply to the residential zoning districts.
Okay, and one other question. Is there any reason why you couldn't just apply this change to areas that are manufactured home overlays? And not extend it to RA5, RA10 and such?
Yes, Sam Booth for the record, once again. That's a possibility, Member Meyer. I think that would, that would indeed narrow the scope of this change even further and would potentially achieve Commissioner Gardner's goal of correcting the fact that in Topaz Ranch Estates, you have, you can have manufactured homes, and then it would also allow manufactured accessory dwellings. However, I know the one example that was given during our discussion with the commissioners was a gentleman who lives outside of the manufactured overlay in the RA5 zoning on the west side of 395, just north of Holbrook Junction. And that was the gentleman that lost his home and accessory dwelling in the Camerac Fire. So it wouldn't apply to that property.
It would not apply to that property, but you could accommodate that property through a variance.
Potentially, yes.
Potentially, yes. Okay.
Is that it, Nick? Good questions. Okay, since this is for action, I would like to open it up for public comment. And while Ellie's coming to the microphone, I'd like to point out that on page 110 of the packet is the motion made to the Board of Commissioners by Commissioner Tarkanian. Thank you, Ellie.
Thank you for the opportunity, Ellie Waller. I want to thank the board for, the commissioners for all the questions that were asked. Some of mine have been answered, some have not. I don't know how you're going to recommend, what you're going to recommend. I'm recommending that the maps that we were not provided in the staff report and a map of the overlays where the manufactured houses are allowed go to the board. The more information provided ahead of time, the less questions or more directive manageable questions. I guess another question that wasn't asked is do ADUs count against the strategic growth initiative? The numbers? This is a new housing structure. Does that take away from the pool? That really should be investigated and discussed with the board. If CCNRs are in place to prohibit an ADU somewhere now or in the future? Because CCNRs change often if people don't want them in their neighborhoods. People purchase homes now to Commissioner Nelson's line of questioning. People purchase homes in certain neighborhoods for their charm. Five acres, isn't that big? Will requirements for placement of an ADU take in consideration a neighbor? Again, people spend a little more money on a five acre place. I think it's, you know, it, it's hard to, to go down this road, but it really should be considered. I'm not sure if building an affordable ADU gets reductions. TRPA recently put out that they're going to waive fees for these accessory dwelling units that they've now allowed in El Dorado County. El Dorado County was very specific in the Mountain Democrat on December 1st about the size of ADUs, where they can go, what they call them. It, it really goes into a lot of information. It's a really good article to read. Again, this is in the Mountain Democrat, December 1. Let's see, oh, okay. And then furthermore, when we start talking about these changes, we're going to have future changes for tiny homes. What the definition, I beg that I could speak another minute? You can cut me off. I just think, and I'll wrap it up. How's that? I just think that there's so much diversity in affordable, achievable, where manufactured could go. We, we need to have that as a future discussion, and I'll add that to my closing public comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ellie. And I'll have the picture you gave us added to the record. Sam, if you can answer some of your questions. As I understand it, we did discuss HOA requirements allowing ADUs accessory dwellings that.
Yeah. Thank you, Chairwoman Casey, Sam Booth for the record. Yes, of course, if there are CCNRs in place in the subdivision that restrict manufactured homes or accessory dwellings, those would apply. And, and yes, that would be something that, that the homeowner or builder would have to consider in, in looking at where they're proposing to place one of these. In addition, I believe, under the public comment question was about the requirement for building allocations. And yes, accessory dwellings require a building allocation. They count towards the overall cap of units in our allocation table per year. A unit is defined as any home with kitchen and a full bedroom, bathrooms, those type of things. So these certainly apply, and we require a residential allocation to be issued with the building permit for accessory dwellings.
Colleen, was there anybody on Zoom for public comment?
Thank you, Chairperson Casey. No, we currently still just have staff on Zoom.
Okay, I'm going to close public comment then. Are there any more questions from the commission or any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Bryce?
Bryce Klutz for the record. Mr. Booth, you mentioned the one exception of the gentleman that was on RA5. I would assume that anybody who has a manufactured home on an RA5 or RA10, that that's grandfathered in from, from some time ago, correct?
That, that could be correct. Bryce, this is Sam Booth. Thank you. I believe in that specific case, because I'm pretty familiar with it at this point. I know they've, they've been trying to work their way through the building plan approval process. The primary home on the property was a manufactured home. The accessory dwelling that existed previously was a stick-built home because it was built as the code required to be stick-built. But a manufactured home can be set on, on any residential zoning district, essentially, as long as it meets those requirements for the single family design guidelines, as long as it's set on a foundation and permitted and reviewed in accordance with the building code in other ways. And what came out of this gentleman's issue was that, I believe, his mother-in-law or a family member lived in the accessory dwelling. They lost both the primary and the accessory dwelling in the fire during the process of trying to permit rebuilding those structures. And I think it's, maybe, maybe incorrect here, but I believe it's Craftsman Homes that's looking, that they're looking at setting two manufactured homes, one for the primary and one for the accessory dwelling. And I think it's, it's both the convenience and the quickness of being able to have those constructed as well as a slightly reduced cost in the, in the construction there as well.
Thank you, Sam.
David? David.
Dave Nelson, for the record. I just wanted to bring a few things up. As far as manufactured housing goes, they are built to HUD standards. HUD has a minimum standard. When you look at smaller, cheaper manufactured homes, they're going to be built to the minimum. So if you're concerned about construction quality, et cetera, of these homes, they're pretty minimum quality, really. They have to be built to go on the highway. So they come in certain sizes that are conducive to going on the highway and moving them to where they're going to be set up. So they do stand out as a manufactured home when they're put on a lot. You can't help that. And so my concern is for our five-acre parcels, 10-acre parcels, where some people have built extremely nice homes in the multimillion-dollar range, I think that these should not be allowed by the county. And so that's why I think that the way this is written right now is not what I would be able to vote for. Thank you.
Thank you, David. And Bryce?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I completely respect Mr. Nelson's comments. I just have a point of clarification. Mr. Booth, you mentioned a moment ago, though, that currently code allows a manufactured home to be put on as low as two-acre parcels, correct? So we already have that code in place. This is specifically addressing accessory dwellings.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Nick?
Mr. Nelson, would you agree to this recommended motion if we removed RA-5 and RA-10 from the additions here and just made this amendment to include manufactured home overlay zoning districts?
Yeah, because that's what we have right now, basically. And so this is just increasing it to the A-5 and A-10 acreage. So we have mobile home overlays right now, and TRE is one of those areas. So if we limited it to that, I would have no problem.
Thank you.
Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of points. First of all, I go back again to what Sam Booth prepared on the single-family dwelling standards. I'm not a housing expert by any stretch of the imagination, but I think if you brought in a lot of people and you showed them the two pictures on that particular slide, the permitted ones, one is manufactured, one is stick-built. And I couldn't tell you which is the more expensive house, which is a better house, which is built to higher standards. It's a free market. People ought to be allowed to purchase the type of house that they want to purchase, put the type of accessory dwelling on the applicable lot size as they see fit. And I think you've got to go back. Commissioner Gardner was the one who initiated this. His motion died for a lack of second, yes. I don't think people understood what his motion was. If I can read from the minutes again what Commissioner Gardner said, he said, "It seems to me that in looking at the code, certain sizes of properties, certain zoning areas, would allow accessory dwellings to be either manufactured home or stick-built." But it seems to me, when we look at the code, if you have a current stick-built home, then you can put an accessory dwelling on it. I believe under 1,000 square feet as a manufactured home. However, if you have a manufactured home already existing on the property, you cannot put an accessory dwelling on that property that is also a manufactured home. That's a clear and simple problem. Commissioner Gardner wanted to fix that problem, and I think the code change that is before us now would do that. Nick, you present a viable alternative, but I think that really limits the applicability and limits the importance of the change. Clearly, in the example that was brought to Commissioner Gardner's attention, that would require that person to request a variance. And I think we ought to make the code as standard as we can and not make a code where we're inviting people to come file variances. I think that's the wrong way to go about doing our job as putting what we want to have as a good standard in code.
Other discussions. Mark?
Well, I like the way Nick put out the compromise. I think that's very appropriate. I believe that, I like what Dave said at his very opening. You know, I don't want to do any harm here. And when I look at allowing additional dwelling units on five- and 10-acre parcels, those are really pretty small parcels. And to have two houses on a five-acre parcel as you're driving down the road is basically urban sprawl, as far as I'm concerned. I do think Commissioner Gardner was trying to do the right thing, and I applaud him for that. But I think we do, in my opinion, I would like to limit this just to manufacturing home overlays as well.
Thank you. I've been spending this last, I don't know, close to an hour thinking about this and reading over the staff findings and reading over the minutes and listening to all the comments and questions and points and trying to decide what to do. And thinking about all our Ag-19 parcels that we have going up and down. And I agree with everyone. It's difficult to make a decision. But I do agree with Mark in that we have an awful lot of sprawl going on and an awful lot of congestion going on in our neighborhoods. And I would hate to see Orchard get more congested, especially with Mueller going in and all the development going on. And I think that overlays is an excellent way to accommodate this. I think for the amount of second units that would be going in in Topaz to accommodate the fires, because the number of units that were lost in Nevada in the Topaz area is very limited, that we could accommodate what Commissioner Gardner is trying to help would be the best way to go. And so therefore, I think we could have a motion at RA-5 in the RA-10. And keep in the language with the MH overlay. Accomplish what Mr. Gardner, Commissioner Gardner, wants to have and have an effective motion. If we change this, we have to have, if I'm correct, Sam Taylor, we have to accommodate the findings, which are on page...
That is...
I lost it. I've got so many things here.
That is correct, Madam Chair. Sam Taylor, again, for the record, you would have to still meet the findings regardless of how you amended this.
And the findings are on page... Oh, here they are. Page 88 of our packet. And if we vote against the motion, we have to make the findings, or can we just amend the motion?
Madam Chair, Sam Taylor, again, for the record, you'd still have to make the findings regardless of how you modified the motion. So if you removed RA-5 and RA-10 from the motion, you'd still have to make the findings with respect to the overlay.
Okay.
Because it is a modification, and it is still a zoning text amendment.
Okay, so the motion, the finding that we would be changing is finding C, which says, "The amendment is not site-specific, and the amendments do not change the nature of that use that is currently allowed within the RA-5, RA-10, and MH overlay district." So that would be the one that we would not be making.
You're talking about the findings?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Because that would be...
It's up to the commissioners to determine whether or not the findings are made based upon the modification to the motion. So however the motion is modified, you still need to make all the findings in order to be able to approve the zoning text amendment.
Okay. I told you, I'm rusty at this. I'm rusty. So at this point, we need a motion.
Madam Chair, before we go to a motion, I have a question.
Okay.
It seems like we're somewhat disjointed on the question of accessory dwellings. And Sam Booth or Sam Taylor, can you correct me if I'm wrong? As I read the existing ordinance on page 90, in letter B, it defines accessory dwelling. And then it goes further on in subpoints 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, as you've enunciated before. And it clearly says, "Accessory dwellings within residential rural agricultural zoning districts are limited to 800 square feet in SFR 1/2, SFR 1, SFR 2, SFR 5, SFR 10." So Orchard can have all the sprawl that people want to put on Orchard by putting accessory dwellings that are stick-built right now in existing code. So we're not doing anything to stop the sprawl or to stop accessory dwellings. All we're doing is discriminating against manufactured homes. And I think we've clearly shown that manufactured homes can be as good as stick-built homes. There's inherent differences, as people have pointed out. But I don't think we're doing a good deed by restricting this to just manufactured home overlays, when we've already got in code that they can go in all the other areas that are as small as 1/2, SFR 1/2. So I think Commissioner Gardner brought a very valid problem to our attention. I think the staff has narrowly drawn this to apply to as few areas as possible. And I think it's a wise provision as it stands.
Well, you do bring an excellent point up. Under 2, it says, "Accessory dwellings within the residential rural agricultural zoning districts limited in size RA-5, RA-10 zoning districts." My error. Bryce?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I didn't mean to cut you off there. Just to piggyback on Member Walder's comments, you know, I don't think it's appropriate for us to speculate what Commissioner Gardner wanted. Mr. Gardner was clear in terms of a problem that he saw. The commissioners voted on this three to two. They are elected by the public. We are an advisory board. And I just don't think it's appropriate for us to start to second-guess or modify Commissioner Gardner's intent. In my opinion, he was very clear on what he wanted. And to Member Walder's point, accessory dwellings already exist on these smaller parcels. And so this is simply an issue of manufactured homes versus stick-built.
I'm sorry, Bryce. Just clarifying something. Nick?
I agree with Commissioner Klutz that this is simply a question of stick-built versus manufactured homes. And I think that's exactly the point. I do not want to make a blanket overlay over RA-5, RA-10 in other areas for manufactured homes in this county. I want to limit it to solve the problem that Mr. Gardner identified, which is to make manufactured homes available in manufactured overlay districts. The Board of County Commissioners and this commission can always, in the future, expand this if we want to. There's nothing limiting us from expanding this. And I think it's appropriate to take a baby step here.
David?
Yeah, I took a very careful reading of the meeting with the commissioners when this came up. And I think it's very clear that four of the commissioners did not want this countywide. I think it was only Mark Gardner who did. And I would encourage you, if you haven't read it carefully, to read it carefully. There was a very strong desire not to have this be countywide by those commissioners.
Kirk?
Madam Chairman, I've read it very carefully, too. I don't believe Commissioner Rice had comments that would align himself with people who didn't want to have it countywide. There was no discussion whatsoever with whether this should be narrowly drawn to Topaz or whether it should be countywide. If they wanted to do that, they could have put that into the motion. And three people voted for that motion to begin with. So I would disagree with you. I listened to the meeting in person, and I read all the minutes that were in their record. There were no objections to this on its merits. Chairman Ingles said, and I won't read the whole thing, he said, "I am in opposition to having staff spend a lot of time on this." That was what his objection was. It wasn't an objection on the merits. Commissioner Noah said basically the same thing. And I said before, I think Sam Booth has done exactly what he was told to do. He has narrowly drawn this. 11 words. It's simple. And going back to what Nick's point was, we already allow, I believe, in the A-19, FR-19, or FR-40. So we're only adding the manufactured overlay as a safety valve, in addition to the RA-5 and the RA-10. So I think it's a good proposition. If the Board doesn't choose to adopt it, then that's up to the Board. But I think we've been given a good proposal with good justification, and it meets all of the findings.
Bryce?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to respond to Member Meyer's comments, I want to be clear that manufactured housing is already permitted countywide on two-acre parcels or greater. This is simply talking about accessory dwellings. So the county...
Recommend approval of a zoning text amendment to Douglas County Code 20.660.150, accessory uses to include the addition of the MH overlay zoning districts to the list of zoning districts where the use of manufactured homes as an accessory dwelling is allowed, and to clarify that they must report presentation and public comment.
Is there a second? Was that the recommended motion?
Excuse me. Just one question. Did you leave out the RA-5 and RA-10?
I did.
Okay, I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Madam Chair, may we have further discussion?
Yes.
I don't want to belabor the point, but again, as Bryce has said, we already have the existing code that allows it to go down to accessory dwellings, to go down to a lower level of lots than RA-5 and RA-10. I think we're doing a disservice to the people who own land in RA-5 and RA-10 to not allow them appropriate building of an accessory dwelling that is a manufactured home, because they clearly can be just as good as a stick-built home and not suffer any impairment to the neighborhood. So I would either oppose the amendment or suggest we modify the amendment or modify the motion to go back to the original amendment, original proposition, which included RA-5 and RA-10.
Thank you, Kirk. Ken?
I believe that all the standards are in all these pieces of paper in front of me. They're clearly tell how accessory dwellings are to be built, how they're supposed to be addressed, how they're to match the primary structure. I don't have any problem with what the documents say.
Thank you, Ken. All those in favor? On Nick's motion?
Aye.
Aye.
All those against?
Nay.
Nay.
Madam Chair, could we have a roll call on this?
Yes. Dave?
Aye.
Ken?
Nay.
Madam Chair, I vote nay.
Aye.
Bryce, did you say?
Sorry, Madam Chair, I voted nay.
Okay, Chair, nay. Motion fails. Three ayes. Four nays.
Madam Chair, I request to make a motion.
Go ahead, Bryce.
I move to recommend approval of a zoning text amendment to Douglas County Code 20.660.150, accessory uses to include the addition of the RA 5, RA 10, and MH overlay zoning districts to the list of zoning districts where the use of manufactured homes as accessory dwellings is allowed. And to clarify that, they must be secured to a permanent foundation as presented in today's reports and public comment.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against?
Aye.
Mark, you voted aye?
No, I'm against this.
Okay, so you vote nay. Against?
Nay.
Nay?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay. Okay, we'll go roll call again. David? Nay. Ken?
Nay.
Bryce?
Aye.
Kirk?
Aye.
Aye. Mark?
Nay.
Chair? Aye. Ken, this was the original motion?
Yes, I said nay.
Okay, so you voted nay on both?
Yes, yes, I did.
Okay.
Madam Chairman, could I ask those that voted nay if they would cite findings that they believe cannot be met for the passage of the motion?
Please. David, your findings?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that.
When you vote nay, you need to address which findings, which are on page 88 of your packet, that you don't think the motion can address, and that would be finding A, B, C, or D. And why you can't make the packet, or make the finding.
What page is that on, Madam Chairman?
Uh, C.
Page 88.
88.
Okay. And why doesn't it make the finding? David?
I don't believe it does because of the need to do this at this time.
Ken?
As I stated earlier, I believe that all these documents are very clear on how accessory buildings and are, how to be built and how to be placed. And so I agree with the existing documents, and this is not needed.
Okay. Nick?
I'm sorry.
Well, I believe that the motion that I offered does meet all the findings. So I voted aye on the motion that I offered, which meets the findings. And I believe that this motion probably meets the findings, too. But I'm under no obligation to vote. I offered a motion that meets the findings and voted for it.
Okay. Mark?
Yes, so when I look at this, I look at the overall arching principles of the master plan, not just the ones that staff brought forward. I look at it and think of any encouragement to add additional homes in any open space area, it goes against the master plan. I think that we don't want to encourage urban sprawl, and, you know, we want to limit to the extent allowed by law any additional septic systems.
Okay. Thank you all. Motion fails. We will move on. Does anyone want to take a break? Sam?
Madam Chair, so since both motions failed, we don't have an affirmative action. And this is Sam Taylor for the record, again, from the Douglas County DA's office, in which case the whole point of what the Commission is supposed to do is make a recommendation one way or another, whether or not to approve or disapprove. So we're kind of in a state of limbo, because basically the proposed recommendation for changes didn't get approved, and also the amendment did not get approved. So the question then becomes, what is it the Planning Commission is approving or disapproving, specifically?
Sam, question, based on our vote today, is this proposal going to go back to the Board of County Commissioners for their final vote? So inaction on our part in no way negates the fact that this is going to go back to the Board of County Commissioners?
That is correct, but the Planning Commission's role in this process is to make a recommendation one way or another. What we have now is kind of like a state of limbo. One proposal did not pass, and the other proposal did not pass. So we're at a, quite frankly, I don't know where we're at particularly, but the purpose of this body is to make a recommendation of the Board one way or another.
If the body does not make a recommendation, does it automatically go to the Board of County Commissioners? Is it delayed for any reason? Is it delayed for any reason? Or will it become on their calendar?
It would still go to the Board of County Commissioners, even if the Commission said, "We want to make no recommendation." In fact, that could be a motion, that we don't want to make a recommendation on this particular subject.
Okay.
But the whole point is that there should be some sort of statement affirmatively or negatively sort of proving where we're headed.
Madam Chairman, if I might, I would like to restate my motion. But prior to restating the motion, I'd like to clarify exactly what the motion is and why I'm making it. So, if I may?
You can try.
Okay. The reason that I made my initial motion was that I wanted to limit the ability of manufactured homes to be added as accessory homes only to the manufactured home overlay districts, specifically in Topaz Estates area. I wanted to specifically limit it to that area because I did not want to expand this capability countywide to RA 5, RA 10 parcels. So that was the purpose of my motion, to specifically limit this to manufacturer home overlays. So I'd like to restate the motion again and have a revote on the motion, if we may. Madam Chairman?
I'd like to check with Sam Taylor, because what I'm concerned about is that isn't the motion before us.
Mr. Meyer can make whichever motion he chooses. He is, in fact, I think, attempting to make a new motion, correct, Mr. Meyer?
That's correct.
Yeah, so he's entitled to make a new motion. We just don't know what it is yet, so it may or may not satisfy the requirements.
All right. I just want to make it clear and check with you before we go to a new motion. Thank you.
I'll second that motion.
Let me make the motion, Dave.
We're getting excited here.
I am recommending approval of a zoning text amendment to Douglas County Code 20.660.150, accessory uses to include the addition of the manufactured home overlay zoning districts to the list of zoning districts where the use of manufactured homes as accessory dwellings is allowed. And to clarify that, they must be secured to a permanent foundation.
Point of order, Madam Chair. It's, if I'm not mistaken, it's the exact same motion he made previously, and we're not allowed to consider the same motion twice.
Sam Taylor, for the record, I would tend to agree with Mr. Walder on this point. I mean, you did make the motion the first time, and it did fail, so you're just repeating the same motion again. Is there a way that you could perhaps modify your motion, Mr. Mayor, to make it more, so that's somehow different than your first motion, which failed?
Let's try this. The motion is as follows. Recommend approval of a zoning text amendment to the Douglas County Code 20.660.150, accessory uses to include the addition of the manufacturing home overlay zoning district specific to Topaz Estates to the list of zoning districts where the use of manufactured homes as accessory dwellings is allowed, and to clarify that they must be secured to a permanent foundation.
Yes, sir.
That is a different motion, Mr. Mayor, and Sam Taylor again for the record. The only concern I have right now is that we're getting dangerously close to spot zoning, where you're zoning for a very specific area as opposed to zoning throughout all of Douglas County and taking and treating them all the same. It's, it makes me nervous, is all I got to say. I don't think it's necessarily appropriate to limit it to one particular area.
Then I withdraw the motion.
Okay, thank you.
I would prefer that we just go ahead and make a positive motion, removing the recommendation for the motion that staff presented to us.
Well, Madam Chair, if I may, the Planning Commission can make a motion, just saying we make no recommendation or we take no stance on the subject, or the motion could be we move to deny the proposal from county staff, or, you know, there's a variety of methodologies to accomplish the goal. The point is, is that the purpose of this meeting is to, and the hearing, is to have a recommendation of some sort come from the Planning Commission to the Board of County Commissioners. I mean, that is the purpose.
That's what I want to do, and I think Mark's prepared to do that.
Certainly. So I'd like to make a motion that no changes be made to Douglas County Code 20.660.150.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
The motion passes by two. Thank you all for your patience and for your vote. You want to take five or move along to the next item?
Yes.
Five minutes? Okay. We'll be back at 2:50. We'll be back at 2:50. Everyone's back in their seats. We are back in session. So we will move to our next order, which is the 2022 Priorities of Planning Commission Members. For discussion only, a discussion by each of the Planning Commission members on goals and priorities for 2022. This was requested by our former chair, Kirk Walder, and we will start down at the end with new commissioner, David Nelson.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Before we begin, if I may, I would just like to do a little asterisk with respect to the priorities, and just note that this body does not have authority or control over policy matters. That rests with the Board of County Commissioners, and as a result, if, you know, your priorities, you know, intersect with the board's authority, then you might not want to do that. Please don't do that. Please refrain from policy decisions. Thank you.
Well, that's why we have you. David.
Okay. Since I was elected to a four-year board, there's, to the board for four years, there's, I have a long-term goal, and I hope the B O C C will see fit to put us to this task. I find Title 20, it was written originally in 1975 with updates occasionally since then, and I think many of those updates have caused an awful lot of confusion and contradictions in what is currently in Title 20, and I think we just witnessed that today. So I would like to see Title 20 during this four-year period, hopefully, either gone through thoroughly and eliminate some of those contradictions, or have it totally rewritten since it was written first in 1975. So that's something I would like to look forward working on in the next four years. Also, as I said earlier, I believe in do no harm, and I think that's very hard to accomplish. I think too often, the things we're asked to do does harm to someone, and I'm a very strong person who believes in zoning. If we're not going to say zoning is important, and therefore people can do whatever they want to do with their property, then there's no need for a planning commission. And so I think that we need to look at zoning very carefully, and make sure we're not making mistakes when we change zoning. So that's where I'm coming from, and where I hope to be of some effect on the planning commission. Thank you.
Those are wonderful. Ken?
I have a few ideas that I'd like to try to implement, but I think I can do them with the help of all of the people here. I'd like to continue to preserve Douglas County's heritage by limiting growth, requiring quality construction, and preserving the ranch and the open space. I'd also like to create a resolution for Douglas County to prohibit the 30-by-30 federal plan for the United States. That's, they want to take over 30% of the land and 30% of the water. I also want to limit the 5G cell towers and raise awareness of the effects of 5G on people, animals, and insects. I also would like to work on the 2017 Douglas County Transportation Plan with respect to more bike and walking paths in the valley, looking at ways to connect existing paths. I'd also like to have an invocation before each planning commission meeting, and finally, work on the 395 going through Douglas, Gardinerville, and Minden to slow the traffic and have more pedestrian safety crosswalks to ease access to businesses along the corridor. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Some of those are policy issues that have to go to the Board of Commissioners, but they're all worthwhile. Nick?
So these are my goals and priorities for 2022. Number one, I'd like to have a presentation by community development on the status of the Bing Quarry, specifically a review of its remediation plan, and the estimate of the timing of the shutdown of that quarry. Number two, I'd like to have an update from community development on the quarry on Johnson Road and its status. Number three, I would like to have a water update from community development, the Town of Minden, and the USGS, to present on the status of our wells and the operation of wells in the Carson Valley, as well as the status of septic nitrite plumes from Ruinstrough and Johnson Lane. Number four, I would like to have community development do a brief review of development projects that are in the pipeline, even those that have not been brought forward yet to the Planning Commission, specifically the Schneider Ranch project. And I'd also like to have an overview of specific areas under the master plan that are available for residential development.
Thank you, Nick. Sam Booth, you got that? Some of those we may look at doing jointly with the Board of Commissioners. Bryce?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As a planning commissioner, I recognize that my role is limited in the advisory capacity that we're in, and so my number-one goal is to show up to each of these meetings prepared, having reviewed the master plan and understand Title 20, and to make my decisions based on what the master plan says and all the work that we did, along with staff, the Board of County Commissioners, and the public, and work to adhere to that master plan as each issue is brought before us. You know, I could sit here and talk about goals that I want for the county all day long, but I don't think that that's within my purview as a planning commissioner.
Thank you, Bryce. Well said. Kirk?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for your conduct of this meeting today. It's been excellent. I did have Sam Booth put up a brief slide that summarizes my priorities. It's also included in the packet, and I think number one is to fully staff the planning department. As many of you know, the planning department has been plagued with vacancies for the last several years. We're now down to just a bare-bones number of staff people, and all of the priorities that I think people have suggested, nothing's going to get done until we get that fully staffed. So I hope the county leadership is cognizant of the need to press ahead with great expediency on staffing the planning department. Second is update the Tahoe master plans, the South Shore Plan and the Tahoe-Douglas Plan. We began to do that at the staff level last year, but again, staffing prevented us from moving forward. Those plans are very dated, as dated as our master plan was when we revised it, and it's an important economic engine for the county, and I think it needs to be done as soon as possible. And then lastly, the Planning Commission is the keeper of the master plan. I think we wrote an excellent master plan that was approved the year before last at the end of the year, and I think as I go through the implementation section, we do need to focus on those that are short-term measures. Dave is 100% right. Title 20 is very key. That's listed as number-one action item in the number-two action item in the Land Use Chapter, also number, action item number 11 in Land Use. So I concur with Planning Commissioner Nelson that that's important to do. I do want to also steal from Bryce, who originally proposed the action item number 23 in Economic Development. Work with the Douglas County School District and other agencies to develop career and technical training, apprenticeship programs, and internships to provide a qualified and educated workforce for our local businesses and industries. If there's one thing that the pandemic has shown to us, is we don't have enough workers who can contribute to the economic prosperity of the county, and I think that's a simple item that could be moved forward quickly, and I hope we do that. And then lastly, the Growth Management and Housing Section, action items 10 and 11, talk about housing recommendations, and I think those are important, both for the Carson Valley and the Tahoe Township. We have a large number of workers who can't afford to live where they work, and that's something that this county needs to address. So those are my priorities, and I hope to work with my colleagues on those in the coming year.
Thank you, Kirk. Mark?
Thank you. So what I'd like to do is, I'd like to work first and foremost on Title 20, and look at each and every provision that the master plan set forth, and say, what do we need to change in the code? Specifically, I would like to look first at TDRs. Today would have been an interesting example of how TDRs could have been used. Anybody that wants an additional dwelling unit, I don't care where you are in the county. If we're trying to preserve the county, we need to have everybody bring a TDR to the table to put a house in. I also would like to look specifically at the planned unit developments, and little tiny things like number of parking spaces, the length of a driveway. I actually looked up, I have a big truck, it is 19 and 3/4 feet long, and I don't know how long my trailer hitch is if I put one on there, but yeah, if you have a 20-foot driveway, it's not going to fit. So just some minor things in the planned unit development as well. Thank you.
Well, I think overwhelmingly, everybody wants to update Title 20. And Sam Booth, I know you and Tom Delaire have been working hard this past year to bring things forward with regards to Title 20 as they come up. And I know that the Board of Commissioners also would like to see Title 20 updated as quickly as possible, and there is no argument anywhere that we want to preserve open space in the floodplain. I think that's critical, and part of doing that is what Mark said, that we have to work on the TDR program. And I think that requiring every unit that gets built to bring forward a TDR is not a bad plan, and updating the TDR program to include that requirement is most excellent. Everyone here at this table has good ideas. We all have a variety of skills. My goal this year is to be a good chair, to be respectful of everyone here, to not overwhelm the board with my ideas, and to dominate, to be respectful of staff and the public, to try to accommodate as many ideas as you have for the agenda, and to be as patient as I possibly can. I ask your patience with me, and to ask you to help me if I get a vote wrong, or I mess up on procedure. But overall, I think we have an excellent group here with so many different skills that I think we're going to have a wonderful year. I thank you all for being here. I thank Sam Taylor for his patience, Ellie for your consistency, Michelle for your wonderful minutes and your patience, Sam Booth, thank you for everything you're doing, thank Tom. And I think we can adjourn this meeting.
Madam Chair.
Sorry, public comment. Bryce?
I just have, I just have one comment, and then I wanted to remind you that Ms. Walder had, wanted some time. I just want to congratulate you on the chair position. I look forward to working with you. Member Niedenrepp, the same with you. I also want to take a moment and thank Commissioner Walder for one of the most excellent jobs that I've seen the last two years, is chairing a commission. I've had the fortune or misfortune of serving on a number of both public and private boards, and you led us admirably through some real tough stuff, both economically and what we had to deal with, and the master plan and all that, and so I want to just thank you and commend you for your service, and I look forward to working with my new colleagues this year. So I just wanted to say that before we moved on.
Yes, I'd like to echo Bryce's comments. It was a pleasure working with Kirk these past two years. Kirk was very courteous to all members on the Planning Commission and to the public. He understood the issues very, very well, and he helped guide us through the meetings exceptionally well, and I just want to say thank you. I appreciate what you've done for us. Congratulations to you on becoming the chair, and welcome to our two members. Thank you.
I keep kicking Kirk's shoes under the DS. I can't fill them yet. Public comment. Ellie?
Thanks again for the opportunity. First and foremost, with this wish list that the public may have, commissioners at both levels, at the board and here, we really do need to revisit the budget. Terry Willoughby has done an exceptional job of bringing all this together and our staff, but we need to assess more funds for staffing the district attorney's office, as well as community development. We need to get some